Okay, I'm opening the Granby Planning Board meeting, August 14th, 2023, at 5:27 or 37, I'm sorry, PM. First order of business or minutes? Do they have any minutes to approve?
There were minutes that were sent to the board at the last meeting, prior to the last meeting. They may be in the packet. If not, I will just suggest to the chair that we can have it for the next meeting.
There was like four meetings.
There were, there were two. They were the March meeting minutes, or yeah, March.
Do you want to make a motion to grab them?
You have March 6 there? 6 and 20?
Yep, this was March 6, and this is March 20.
This is an older one, huh? So minutes from March 6 and March 20?
Yeah.
So Nate, you weren't here for the first one, so you can abstain from that.
And then I need to abstain from March 20. But I'll make a motion to approve March 6.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next one? We're gonna have to continue this one.
Oh, do you have to write it? Because Nita?
Nita's not here, and it was just Jason and myself.
Right.
Okay.
Table that. Correspondence. We have a new contract between the Town of Granby and Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to retain services for... Ken? As our consultant, do you want to review it? It's basically boilerplate from previous years.
Yep.
Is there more invoices to go over?
Yes.
Should we move those to the end?
What's that?
Should we move those to the end?
No, we're gonna do those after we've reviewed all the correspondence.
Okay.
I'll sustain a motion to approve the new contract with Pioneer Valley.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion on it? Do they have any sign up?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. You're good for another year, Ken.
Nice.
All right, we've got a correspondence from Kathy Cali Regan, our town clerk, that there was no appeal to the permit that was issued for 185 West State Street, for the special permit for the car lot.
Oh, okay.
That's that. And the other one we have is, we're gonna have a joint public hearing on August 17th. The zoning board of appeals. 6:00 PM to consider the petition of Deanna Armitage, applicant owner seeking a variance. Put a deck up, I guess it doesn't meet the setbacks on, uh... On 15 Smith Avenue. So be aware that it'll be on our agenda on August 17th, 6 o'clock here.
So the board is having a special meeting?
For variance?
Zoning Board of Appeals.
Planning Board typically doesn't oversee variance.
We don't, but the zoning board of appeals will do. So typically what we've done in the past is, they review it, we review it. If, if we don't see, if we don't take issue with it, then it's up to the zoning board of appeals to determine whether or not...
So more so like recommendation?
Yeah. We've done a bunch of those in the past. Okay, so we'll move on to invoices. We've got an invoice here from Pioneer Valley. Our service is rendered in the amount of $1,542.15, period covering January 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2023.
Do you want individual motions for each invoice, or?
No.
Just one? Okay.
Just one motion? Whenever anyone's ready.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Is there anybody here in, in the audience that... Are you here for any particular reason?
I think I'm on 193 Amherst Street.
Deer Creek.
Okay, okay. Mr. Katalowicz is here. He is not on the agenda, asking if we can sign an A&R, sign off on an A&R.
It's up to the board. I mean, the board has no set policy on reviewing documents prior to the meeting. Something that I think the board should probably consider. Having a review period of at least the weekend to look at items. You know, the, the agenda typically says the listing of matters are those reasonably anticipated by the planning board, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. Typically, you would have an A&R on the agenda, as has been done on previous agendas. So it's the board's...
Well, Mr. Katalowicz called me earlier today and asked if he could come. I said it was up to the board. He can certainly be here, but it would be up to the board whether or not they wanted to review it and approve it tonight. This is part of an ongoing A&R, lots that we've been approving right along. I don't take issue with it, but any discussion with the board if they want to review it and...
I would, I would suggest a motion to add that agenda item.
So I'll make a motion to add the agenda item. Mr. Katalowicz, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Present.
My name is Howard Chap. I'm 356 Punch Street. I'm a mass surveyor for the project. Mr. Katalowicz has a agreement with the Shalowskis to sub by the parcel. Right now, there are two lots on the left. You have signed previous plans for lots 11, 10, 9, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Corresponding recorded information shown. So what's left is 7 and 8. Currently has a potential buyer for lot 8.
Both of them.
Both of them, okay. So he cannot sign a contract until the plan is recorded because the lots don't exist until the plan is endorsed, and then the attorneys can then do the purchase and sale based upon the record file. They need the required frontage and area for this zone. And they have access to all 70 street.
Okay, I'll have to take a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the A&R for lot 7 and 8.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Allen has an application for the final fee of...
125 per lot.
Per lot. 125.
Per lot.
Per lot.
But also, we have to file against the remainder.
There is a remainder. It's gone.
Everything's gone. There's nothing left.
We have all the primary information here. It's been recorded. And this one here, and this one here. They've all been signed and endorsed. So it's two lots.
So what were these lots, lots part of? They were just left by the...
Well, apparently it was this larger tract, if you will, that were in the lot. And Allen went under contract on certain lots that people wanted to buy, so...
So this was, this was one lot?
One parcel?
No. This lot exists now under Plan 253, Page 6. This was a remainder piece. You endorsed this lot. That was a remainder. And I believe you charged him 200 also, so that was 250. So you only have, you're only creating two lots on this plan.
There's a house here, there's a house here. So is this remaining land?
I get it. I get, I get that. I just want to make sure that we're not... Because when, when they go to record this...
Well, the filing fee is based on the town challenge, not, not what the registry needs. The registry needs to charge 110 to record it. And that is just a straight fee. It could be 20 lots, it could be five lots, it could be more than a lot. It's just a straight fee. And then the conveyance, it's a lot of state tax on them, obviously. We can go ahead with that with state tax.
Because normally when we do this, there's still one... It's, it's gotta be rerecorded, but this is a little different, so okay, we're good with it. 250.
Yeah. Okay.
Ken, check that out.
I'll just give it to them.
Is this the last of them?
Yes. Good looking home, by the way. Relax.
I will tell you complimentary time.
Oh, did you say that one?
Yeah. I didn't.
Okay.
My pleasure.
Very much, yes. Thanks for... I appreciate it.
No problem. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
This is all set?
Yep.
And that stuff's all there? It stays right there?
I think everything I missed...
What's that?
I think everything I missed is pretty cut and dry, except number nine and 11. Nine and 11, yep.
Okay, the next, the next thing on our agenda is 193 Amherst Street for the event. Special permit for the event. So you're, you're here today to see if everything that you've provided is sufficient. Kenneth, you had a chance to look at it?
I have had a chance. I think, you know, one of the things that... Because this will require additional permitting from other boards, particularly the Board of Health, it may be helpful to have the applicant provide measurements on the, on the site plan, particularly the bathroom and tent space. Acknowledgement that if you have structures on the building, what those are, what are they gonna be used for? Like, are they structures, presumably a home? If there's going to be, you know, if you're thinking that there may be activity there. I think what you've drawn is specific to locations where you'd like to have your special events, but considering that there are existing structures on site, figuring how you're gonna address those. Either through narrative, like writing, that might be what you're gonna do. And probably that might be the easiest way. Everything in writing.
Okay. Because I think right now, like, all the existing structures that are there, we don't care to use. We're gonna probably, it could be temporary, or we have our facilities are on, it's a trailer. And right now, the Board of Health is meeting on that tonight and giving a permit. And she also set a permit for all of state vendors, the vendors that come in. So for measurements on those things, what are you, what are you looking for? Because like the barn is just, it's a prop. We're not really gonna facilitate people in there. It's just not something we're just...
It's just used for...
It's just a prop. It's, yeah, it's pretty, it's there, it's, it's really nothing. We're not looking at housing people in there. And then any of the other existing buildings for our special events could be storage, just for people's stuff. Well, other than that, we have a tent, we have a 20 by 30 tent.
And that's where you, where you intend all of the activities?
It would be in there, yeah. All of like the group gatherings would be outside, under these tents. The tent size could be, be determined on what event is happening, weather, and stuff like that. And I spoke with the fire chief 2011, who said, as long as all four sides aren't enclosed, a special permit would be required on that tent over a certain size. He said, as long as all four sides aren't enclosed, we would need like a fire suppression system in there. So, I mean, I think that was something that he was okay about. But other than that, I asked him some concerns. He said, egress. And when I spoke with the police chief, he said, he just wants to keep everybody off the road parking. And we plan on, depending on what season it is, or whether shoveling are customers in, or really... So if they need to get shut, then they will. If it feels super wet, and if not, we can park, we can park on site. I have some overhead footage from, our neighbors got there on our property. I have some overhead footage, and we can count the cars, we can count it up to 98, we can build. And that's just for one, I can fail fields. But for veterans, I'm just, you know, whatever you need, I can definitely... Anyway, I spoke with a surveying company today to see if like, if something that I need, like, is super formal. And he was like, not unless we're adding structures, which I'm not, but we do plan to add the egresses in the next couple of years as revenue streams start to change, if we can afford it. And that would take a little time. I'll reach out to the surveying company and... You know, we get the whole place to offer real nice and, and such to you guys. But right now, yeah, we think it's gonna be temporary, brought in, revoked on a vet, you know, weekend, and start to finish, stuff like that.
So in the wet... So, um, in the wedding, the wedding, when you had the 98 cars, they all went in through your driveway and then parked over on lot two?
Yeah, on the left. Not on lot two, no. Yeah, on that picture that we drew with the colors. It says parking.
Yep.
Um, in, in that area there.
Okay.
And I have spoken, like, you have, you know, you guys, of what it actually looked like when the events in progress could be better, you have to scale. I have my problems with that. I've researched a few of it, but it just was hard.
I think what will be helpful for the board and for the abutters when you have your public hearing is what that, like, what an event actually looks like. And I think if you have footage from the wedding, that probably is very helpful. And the board probably should just accept that, um, in addition to what has already been submitted.
Yep.
Say that again, Ken.
As far as, so I think that it's likely that the questions that the board may have when you have the public hearing, as well as, uh, for the abutters who attend, is, um, trying to see what truly an impact can be.
Okay. So, so pictures, maybe I could invite you.
Pictures, but if you could blow this up.
Okay.
And then put some dimensions on it.
Okay.
So that not just for us to see, but abutters.
Any questions, right?
Any questions. And then we circulate this to all the other department heads.
Okay.
To get any, get any feedback. You're already meeting with Board of Health, so.
Yeah.
They're already.
We're waiting, so.
So, and John, the dumpster is over in front of the barn? Okay. Well, it's...
Yeah, so it's, it's in pink, right next to the large barn. That's a whole way.
Okay. And I think.
This is my first time doing this all the time.
That's okay.
I felt like, you know, it was a little legend, you know, you guys understand what's going on. I'm like, you know, down on the nap, maybe do it. But, you know, this is a good start. Anything else you guys have to add?
I think the only other question, I think everything is pretty self-explanatory on, um, requirements, et cetera, but, um, number of employees, I don't think that was on your application. Restroom answered that.
Number of employees will be honestly.
Based on vendor?
Based on, for my employees, the vendors are a separate contractor for us.
Right.
Um, but for my employees, starting out, I think we put down five.
Okay.
Uh, cause I think that's what we're comfortable with, is if I'm, I change, like, oh, like, down, you know, providing each event, cause everything's kind of unique. So for example, in the fall, we had some of the jobs, still, a workout event we did last year, um, and it definitely meant me and my wife were all sadly, you know, the girls, they work out field and then they leave.
Right.
So, um, for weddings, you know, uh, when it comes to, you know, taking care of chairs that are in the orchard, say, or the ceremony that need to get wrapped up, you know, I have nothing for that.
Okay. So I would say when you do the public hearing, just kind of actually have that laid out, say, like, how many, the number of employees.
Sure.
Um, and then I think instead of, I think the color coding is great, but I think actually put it, like blow, like Jim said, blowing everything up and then just say, okay, this is parking, this is where the event is, this is the facility. So this way, it's kind of spelled out.
Yeah, the, the board needs to understand it as well as, to be able to explain it to the public as well. So there's questions asked.
Absolutely.
And then I would take a picture of your signage that you, I think.
I'm like proposing a, a sign. We have, we're like in the process of building. It's just like a wooden sign that has our name or a little one and stuff. We're just going to put it out in the front of the house. So what would you need to say, go forward with that? Do you want to draw one up?
We don't, we do not need to see that.
Okay.
So long as it meets the bylaws, size wise.
Okay.
Which is, what, three by, two by four, I don't know what the square footage is.
Well, you're in the, um, it's in the agricultural, residential agricultural. So let me quickly look at. I think I read that.
Should we include, should he include a lighting plan?
It can be ground lit, but it's not a special permit if you keep it within, I think it's nine square feet.
Nine square feet, yes. I think it's like 30 cent. It's just a smart. We have to have it up to the block, like, this is a bit down around about three.
And so you're saying that, like, if there isn't adequate, uh, weather that you'll shuttle people in?
Yeah, yep, yep.
Yeah, I think, like, contemplating every sort of situation that you can.
Yeah, okay.
That's going to be likely a rest of the public hearing.
As a public hearing, absolutely.
Especially if you have ideas of shuttling, like, where are those vehicles going to be parked?
Right.
And, um, things like that. I think, um, to Melissa's point, also about lighting, um, that's quite important as far as you have some lighting that you, you denote with, like, little colors. But what do those actually look like?
So you want to know, like, what pasture lighting I'm putting in? Okay, yeah. I'm a battery operator. They're wild, like, up late trees. It's super bright. And I have a few, like, spotlights on the side of the barn, light up, super bright, so.
Cause that, that could be a consideration for the planning board, considering site plan does look at the types of lighting and ensuring that, you know.
It's adequate.
Well, it's adequate for safety, but at the same time, that it's, you know, you're.
It's not intruding on.
On your neighbor.
Oh, yeah, oh, absolutely.
Which it shouldn't be, because the bylaws already say the setbacks have to be.
Right, right. But, but it's, it's, it's like the, what the entrance, what the lighting at the entrance looks like. And particular, you know, there, so there may be some particulars that the board may have questions.
Okay, absolutely.
Uh, let me just quickly look at this signs.
Do you have a copy of this, John? This, um, special event requirements?
Yeah, Melissa.
Uh, signs as permitted in the.
Five, yeah, 5.14.
Yep.
Um, all residential zones, one non-illuminated residential nameplate sign situated within the property line and not exceeding. So that's nameplate. So that's like.
This is that sign.
Yeah. So I think what is pertinent to you is one non-flashing, non-illuminated tempor, no, that's temporary. Um, one non-flashing, non-illuminated wall or freestanding sign identifying a school, church, public park, or other such permitted use located no less than 10 feet from any street or property line and not exceeding, and not exceeding 10 square feet in area on, on any one side.
So the wood sign is fine, just can't be illuminated?
Yeah, and it has to be 10 feet from the right of way.
It has, it has to be at an available 10 feet?
Um, at no less than 10 feet. Yeah. And that, that's located in the sign section, 5.59, on page 60.
Page what?
Page 60.
And I guess when you go to public hearing, just, you know, have all the permits that, if you have approvals, just attach it.
And so what would typically happen too is if the planning board chooses to, um, condition the approval and provide special conditions, that would happen when we discuss it in the public hearing, um, with regards to the various things that you could possibly be doing within that use. Um, so that's something that could happen, um, at the public hearing. Um, I know that Kathy had sent an email with regards to, um, submittals. I know you provided them through the board, but, um, I think.
Send it by.
Yes. Okay. So, yeah, that needs to be submitted so that that can be shared with the, um, with the other town office, uh, town departments. But I think if you are changing that site plan, that you should do that, you know, and ensure that they're seeing the most up-to-date.
Up-to-date, okay, okay.
Um, but then I will work with Kathy. I'm getting this on the, um, board's agenda for a, a hearing.
Okay.
Probably the second meeting in, let's look at his calendar.
September?
Yeah. The board of the, you're lucky because there's five weeks in August, so can actually play with getting this in the newspaper, um, because the board meets the second and fourth Tuesdays of, Mondays of the month. So it would be September 11th, um, where you would have the public hearing, if the board was planning to be there.
Can you, can you get everything together by then?
I mean, I think the only thing I'm reminding you to get together is to change that site plan track.
Yeah.
And just make sure I'm ready, like, if people ask me questions, can answer.
So.
I think about this 24/7, I'll be like.
I think, um, what you need to do too is, I don't know if you went to the assessor's office for an abutter's list?
Yeah. We, we sent a letter, we brought a letter in, and the abutters list back April.
So I, I saw that you sent that to the, um, the, you're a butters, but there's going to be a requirement for an actual notice for the public hearing. So.
Oh, so I have to let that notice send out on the note?
No, no. When you fill out the application, with the rest of the information to the town, Kathy Leonard will send out a notice to all the butters.
Okay.
So you just provide that a butters list to Kathy?
Just, I just provide, okay, cool. I believe she might have that, honestly, like, this would be part of your comment, true to that.
I believe she does, but I'm just, I'm just saying.
And so she'll send it out, and once you give her the okay, right? Kind of, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Cause that's kind of how I got an email today. She was like, once they look at your permit and everything, and they say it's okay, and you can go forward, forward with the public hearing.
Yeah.
And send it out to the butters. And I think our letter's already written. We should go with that.
Well, that, that's, that's a letter that you prepared.
Right.
There's a specific town, uh, correspondence informing them. It's like legal notice that goes each of the residents. So it's a separate mailing from what you might have.
Okay.
And then basically, because they're the butters, they're being notified specifically to attend the meeting if they have.
If they have issues.
If they, if they want to hear what's going.
Awesome, awesome. And then our letter gets sent out by us certified or by the town certified?
You don't send out a letter.
You don't. I mean, that letter, you can feel free to do what you want with that letter that you included in your application.
Okay.
Um, but the town will send on your behalf.
On, on my behalf.
The, the, the requirement for the public hearing.
Okay.
And posted in the newspaper. Cause that we have to.
It's perfect, yep.
Okay, so the other question that came up was the fee for this process.
Is there a special permit fee?
Yes.
Did you already submit that?
I think my wife maybe just left a blank check to make sure we got the process going.
Okay.
So, so basically it's, for this, it would be postage to send out the.
Yep.
Okay. And then, um, I don't see the need at this point for any, um, outside consultants.
I don't think so. Um, yeah, I mean, if, depending on the testimony, the board can do what they want, but, um, based on the application, I think in our conversation this evening.
So what's the basic application fee?
That, that's a good question. I, Kathy usually doesn't want that accepted.
She doesn't.
Oh, okay. Oh.
Because that was the only thing. She was like, you need to do this. And I was like.
Well, she called, she called you and I said the board would discuss it because.
Yeah. And whatever it is, if it is, just let us know. We'd be happy to.
But you've done special permits before for, like, specific things, right?
Yeah. Maybe not this, um, it's not that we have done a few permits, but each department was separately. It's not that we have a permit for standing in front, right? So like every time.
Yeah, um.
But you can ask the guys, right? Maybe you can break it off tomorrow.
Let's see. There's something that's posted here from 2019, a planning board fee schedule.
That's it.
And, um, special permits, public hearing notices. So special permit with site plan approval is a small project, any residential use in a residential zone, medium project, any business that operates out of a home or structure in a residential zone, um, and large project, any business in a business zone.
This would be a small project. No consultants needed to go.
Yeah, the small project is 400 plus 10 cents per square foot of structures.
But there's no structure.
Yeah, so then probably if the board agrees on what's due, it's 400. So then there's also a public hearing notice. In addition to the required application fee, whenever an application for planning board approval requires a public hearing, the following fees are to be assessed to and paid by the applicant. Um, notice to abutters, $50 plus actual cost of postage, um, and must be paid prior to the beginning of the public hearing, and then the actual cost of the public hearing advertisement, which will be probably invoiced to the active.
Sure, that's good.
So the $400?
That's what's listed, uh, under site, special permit with site plan approval. That's just the app cost. So there's nothing else that suggests.
I'd be in favor of waiving it or waiving half of it at least for this type of project.
Cause there's no structure.
Yeah, it's not, yeah, I agree. Doesn't seem right to be doing that. Right. So I'll entertain a motion to. I would entertain a motion to waive the fee. Period.
That's not inclusive of, uh.
A butters.
Not inclusive of our direct cost.
So they'll have to just, they'll have to pay the, the fee to.
Whatever, whatever costs we incur, the postage, Kathy's time to, to, um, do the mailing, the advertisement through the town reminder or whatever. And then waive the, the $400 fee.
For the application.
For the application.
I'll make a motion to waive the fee, the $400 fee for the application.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So then you just bill me after for the time?
No. So you'll have to call Kathy and figure out what the abutter, like, so just let her know that we made a motion to, to waive the special permit fee of 400, but then you'll just have to figure out what the additional costs are, cause you'll have to pay for the.
She'll let you know based on how many abutters there are and what the typical advertisement is.
And you'll just have to pay that.
Yeah, and presumably you'll be able to pay that prior to the public hearing. So.
Yeah, she'll know that, she'll know that.
Yeah, she'll know that amount.
Okay. Just be as thorough as possible.
So I think, um.
Not ask, like, don't go tightly crazy type A, but like, you can go down a rabbit hole, but like, you know, I would just go over everything and just write. I would just go over everything and just write a, a narrative. And you said you've already talked to the fire department, so write a little narrative on that. Have, you know.
And we're gonna send, we're gonna send the, the plans to them and they're gonna give us feedback as well.
Okay.
We circulate it to all the department heads.
Okay.
And they'll, they'll let us know if they have any concerns.
Perfect.
And we'll, we usually put that into the conditions.
Yes, so, um, at the board's next meeting on, well, the board's meeting on September eleventh is when the public hearing will be.
Okay.
So we'll post for, um, August twenty-eighth and August fourth. Those are the two weeks where there are the public hearing.
So when you work with Kathy on that, you can also let her know what, what the fee is.
Uh huh.
Based on, or just charge it for that's why.
Yeah, you waive the application fee, but the public hearing knows that's, that's the year.
Right.
And what those fees are.
Okay. Do you have any questions for us?
Um, the sign was our next step of that.
Building inspector.
Building inspector, Kathy, reach out and tell the guys where, did we go with it?
Well, he'll, he'll know that the, the, it has nothing to do with us.
Okay.
That the sign is within the-
Okay, the sign is within the parameters that you guys were grateful for, awesome.
Uh, we had the discussion of the growing facilities and the wireless and telecommunications towers.
Well, the, the discussion on the wireless telecommunication, I think we ought to just take that right off the agenda. There's, there's nobody here banging on our door to do it. We've already allowed some of them in here, so.
Has anyone asked us within the agenda?
It came up once before.
Okay.
That was, I actually was preparing the minutes and it was from a meeting in April where, um, there was a question about a previously approved wireless, you know.
Cell tower?
Infrastructure, yeah. Um, and what process the town used in order to approve that.
Okay.
Um, and the suggestion that I made was if we have, if the planning board has documentation of what process they use, then that should be the process that it moves forward with.
Okay.
Um, but absent that, a consideration for zoning intervention if you wanna do that.
So, I mean, as far as wireless, I mean, like what, what tax benefit, like how much would that bring into the town for revenue?
That I don't know. I mean, the thing is, those types of infrastructure and those types of facilities are protected under the zoning act as ones that, you know, you can provide a process by which you review them, but they can't, they're not going to be prohibited.
Okay.
So it's, it's a matter of how you want to either create a review process, um, as to how, you know, tall, how they may look.
Yep.
It falls under a regular site plan review for the most part. They're, they're, they're basically, you have to allow.
Right, and I've seen towns where they actually, um, make different looking cell towers. They don't look like huge structures. They have like-
Trees.
They look like trees, right. So this way it doesn't, um, mess with the look of Granby. They're not glaring in your eye. Um.
But that's something we can deal with when they come to us for a special permit too.
Yeah, right, right.
Well, the, the question is whether or not that would go through a special permit process or a site plan.
It'd be a site plan because we don't have, we don't have any teeth in the matter as far as denying it. So it wouldn't be a special permit.
But we already have bylaws talking about-
Well, this, the state has put certain bylaws in place for us, like fencing and-
Right.
Access and that type of thing, so. I mean, we use, our town facility uses the towers. They've, they've got their own equipment on some of these towers, so it's a, it's a public service for-
True.
Okay, all right, so, and then the next thing is-
Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, and then, um, growing facilities under Granby's, I mean, are we, has that gentleman come back and asked more questions regarding this?
I'm not sure. I think the last time-
So, so here's my take on this. The select board asked us to look into it.
We did.
We did a little bit.
Surface.
On the surface. We've got one individual in town who's interested in doing something.
But he's brought nothing in front of us. He just wants us to-
To look into it.
Right.
So. I'll leave it up to the board, but I don't feel like spinning my wheels over something that doesn't have a huge demand. These, these places are starting to shut down already.
Right.
Boy, up just shut down a huge one.
What, a dispensary or a growth facility?
Growth facility, a huge growth facility, saturated market.
Oh yeah, no, I believe it. I mean, the only, I don't, I wouldn't ever imagine a retailer coming to Granby, however, a growth facility is something, you know, presumably that could. But you already have a bylaw and whether or not you want to amend it.
They wanted us to revisit it.
Right.
And I, I can understand, understand it to a, to a degree, but I mean, it's up to the board. You guys wanna look into it?
I mean, I think, I think that they were just asking us to amend the bylaw stating that it had to be in the industrial zone. Is that correct?
Currently it's allowed in the industrial zone. So it's a matter of, I think that particular property was not in the industrial zone and wanted to do growth facility.
Mm-hmm.
So creating standards for either the size of the growth facility or some other standard, that's something, you know, if the board wants to explore, that's what you probably would be looking at, is to allow it elsewhere in town, but create those standards for that.
Right.
Personally, I, I think if nobody's knocking on the town's door every week, it can be addressed if there is an interest.
Of course, yeah. I mean, the thing, yeah, so the thing is it definitely can, and the board has every right to also say, hmm, you know, you know, if you want to do this, then you have to go through a zoning bylaw amendment. And the board will have its public hearing and the town meeting will approve it if they want it. So, you know, you can address that way too. So if there's, if the voices are loud enough, you know, then you move forward.
You know.
And there's only one person that is, who wants us to amend. They approached the select board. And that person, I want, I mean, I'm-
Well, he tried to, the individual tried to get enough signatures to bring it to a town vote and fled, I believe.
Okay. And then so that's gonna keep-
So the select board, out of fairness, said, well, why don't we look into it? And we kinda did, but I don't see a demand, I don't see a demand for it and, nor do I see other townspeople saying, hey, I wanna, I wanna-
Right, right.
I think my biggest thing is just, again, revenue dollars for the town and, um, and I, I mentioned that before, is that I don't want to, you know, pass on something that is going to bring income. But I agree with you that if other ta, other towns and cities are closing their growth facility operation, then maybe we look at it on a case-by-case basis versus, you know, amending our bylaws or zoning.
Well, I think the case-by-case basis is ensuring that that particular use is allowed for that particular zone, right?
Right.
You know, you currently have zoning bylaws that address where you can and can't develop these.
Right, and no one has in those locations.
There's been no permits, no applications for those types of uses. But it also is, I think, the dynamic of the industry has changed where we had this conversation as far as doing something outdoors rather than in, in, in the industrial zone, which would require-
We don't even have a dispensary in town. We were licensed for two. The town approved for two.
Right.
We haven't even had an application for that.
No.
So I think that while I understand why they want us to look at the bylaws and consider changing them, I think we do it on a case-by-case basis. This way we have a little bit more control over, over the situation. What do you think?
I mean, it's up to the board, um, you know, I think because you have the ability to oversee a permitting process that allows for these facilities in town, you know, you're not prohibiting it.
Right.
Which is, you know, it's a protected use in the fact that you are a yes town and, you know, have the zoning bylaw. Um, but, you know, should there come an, an opportunity or a, um, an application or interest that comes from, you know, someone, an interested developer, then obviously they come to the board and if their application doesn't make sense within the context of your bylaw, they're gonna ask to address that change.
Or it makes sense and we agreed to amend, allow a special permit.
If we could, I mean, you, yeah, you would go through a special permit process because they would be already meeting the initial criteria for them to go through that process.
This has been on our agenda for several months and nobody has showed up in favor of this other than one individual. I don't think it's worth our effort at this point or the, or the cost to the town to have hearings and, and push something through that there's no demand for at this time. We talked about it before. They can, it would be better to, to have it set up if, in case there was a, a, a big interest in it. But the industry's going in the other direction right now. So.
Yep, I think you're right.
I would entertain a motion to have, have Ken send a letter to the select board on our behalf.
Yep. I'll make the motion for Ken to send a letter on the board's behalf regarding growing facilities.
Outside, outside.
Outside, you know, the commercial zone.
We already-
No, already.
Allow use.
Yeah, allowed use, yeah.
And you can bring it at the next, the next meeting. You can review it. I'll sign it and you can send it out.
Who, so you made the motion?
I made the motion. I don't have, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Next motion I'll entertain is adjourned.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Six forty-one.